Office?
Yes.
And is techno working?
We're gonna see.
Okay.
That's that be my U education coming out right now.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
It's all the support.
Yeah, we only gave you half.
It just works. So, um, that's a blessing, trust me. So, we'll turn it over to you and Chair.
Your proposed budget.
You bet. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Um, it's really good to be here with all of you today. Um, this may be too complicated and then hopefully if anyone has specific questions, I'll answer what I can and then take back what I can and get back to you as soon as I can to the questions you might have. Um, for the public's, so what I've handed out, I've handed to you, um,
Um, kind of an easy presentation here and for the, the public's view, I've, I've put it up on, on the, uh, on the slides. Um, the second page of your packet has just straight out of the PDF that was in the media packet for the executive office. And all of my slides, I, I don't have a lot of numbers in here, but the ones that I do should tie to the 2024 council, um, column, just to make it simple. So, the vast majority of our budget is in personnel with, uh, Executive Zook is our one elected official and then three full-time employees. We've got me, the chief deputy, we've got our two policy analysts in Karina and Janine. And then the proposed budget for 2024 would be what is equivalent to one-fourth time of an intern. Um, and so instead of, you know, a full-time position is 2,080 hours. What we had originally proposed in the tentative budget was half of that. So, 1040 hours, but then as part of the 3% reduction, we proposed reducing some of those hours, uh, to about half of that. So, it's pretty much a quarter time intern.
And what was the rate of pay for that intern?
It was budgeted at 20, but I think we only pay around 16 or 18 for that.
Do they get any kind of benefits?
They don't.
Okay.
Just the wonderful honor of working the salary.
There's no.
Yes, in, in the Breeze way that I like to call it.
What does an intern do?
Um, we have two interns right now. One works five hours approximately a week and the other works about 20. They haven't been there all year. So, the one that works five hours, Ashley, the bulk of what she's doing is all five hours a week, is doing it more administrative type projects. Uh, for instance, she's helped us organize the contracts list into an Excel spreadsheet. All of the records that we have now, she's been able to compile into a spreadsheet so that we can search it, uh, people can search that. Um, and then I wrote it, I took some notes here. She is, um, doing other administrative, she primarily works under Janine primarily. And so she does, um, she also handles the, a big part of what she does is handling TextMyGov, that system, where if anyone texts, it's on all of our websites, the TextMyGov program. And so if people want to sign up for texts, that's where they go. But they can ask specific questions and that will, you know, they can text the whole system and then we get those. So, she'll answer those out. Um, so she manages that. In addition, um, right now she's working on compiling, uh, the records with the resolutions and ordinances into one document. So, those are easier to search as well. Uh, Talon, uh, has primarily worked for, uh, the other three of us, for me, David and Karina. And he does various research projects. Um, for instance, when he first came, I had him working on looking at other counties, what their budget looks like at the end. So, how to, like, the budget forms the things that the public can see, to see how they, um, just to compare so that we can see how easy it is to understand and digest the budget. Um, he's also done different code research for us on helping us understand different parts of our county code to make sure it's in compliance with state code and if we're doing the right thing, um, at the, on the executive side. And then also I've asked him to do some county comparisons on just various things. Budgets, maybe how big their development services office is, things like that, just to see how other counties are handling and fulfilling their roles as well. But they are not, um, we didn't tell them, hey, we definitely have funding. So, we, we're, we're not even really sure. We've pretty much told them that they may not, you know, from the first, they can expect to work to the end of the year because a fourth time intern, you know, we had salary savings before, but we don't, we won't have that expectation in, in the coming year, um, for when I was over with development services. I don't know if that makes sense, because the, we, so, um, so that's how we were able to spend some money on interns. But then in 2024, it's just going to be what's in the budget. So, that quarter time is all that would be there and that's not enough time to have them both working the same amount. Um, so we're not planning on having them necessarily start at the beginning of the year and it's, we're not even sure that we would use even all of that time. It really comes up to what, if there are projects or things that come up, maybe the council has a special thing that we're going to focus on in 2024 and then we could have them help with that as well. So, um, the remainder of, of the budget on that second page in the packet, um, is combined into, um, supplies and services. And that is only 8.8 of our, percent of our expenditures. And then in those, um, two boxes there on the third page, I've just kind of listed what some of those are. That does include our travel. We, um, our, our travel was cut at the end of last year and so some of, um, some of the different conferences or trainings that I might have gone to in 2023, we were just really careful and I just, I didn't travel that much. I was involved in the Utah Rural Leadership Academy. Um, so the travel from the executive office that would have paid for that would have just been like for gas, because the academy paid for the lodging. I was usually down a couple times to Cedar City and then maybe once to Salt Lake.
So, the county paid for your gas?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I'm in that, I, like, I'd never turn in receipts. I'm never sure, like, what, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And so, um, then, and then what I included on the next slide was, because that's just a really over, kind of a big overview. Um, and, and then just to give an, as an idea, our tentative budget proposed a small decrease over 2023, but then our, um, 3% cut proposal, um, which the council gladly accepted was 15,800 in reductions. That was 3% off of the approximately, um, 500,000, um, in expenditures. And then just, I just included the next two slides to kind of give an overview about what we do according to statute, the, the, the way that the state code phrases it is the county executive powers, duties and functions. And that, all of these bullets are near exact quotes of, of the code, except for if I needed to, um, just combine so the bullet wasn't super long. But these are just some of the different powers, duties and functions of the chief executive on this slide. Um, he's the chief executive office. Some of the, um, bullets that they talked about in the code talked about supervisory and coordinating control, as well as conducting studies. And then I added overseeing contracts. That was one of the last bullets, as far as what he does and how he fulfills his role. And then, um, in the next slide, how we organize our work currently in the executive office. I wanted to show, you know, if I had a slide for the county executive, I thought, why don't we give you a report on how we've divided the, the work amongst the other three staff members? The chief deputy, of course, is me and those are just some bullets on how I would shortly describe what I do. Uh, David has given me direct reporting over several of our, what we've kind of informally called internal services departments, like IT, um, development services, um, HR before. And then, um, we've, we've kind of switched back and forth this year between having David or I directly have things like, um, the visitors bureau or, um, the fairgrounds report directly to me or directly to him. Um, also, I think a lot of what I've done is just helping us manage our work as far as budgets go, um, supporting the department leaders. And when I put departmental leader, that's me actually being a, um, a direct report for them. But then departmental liaison would be for all the other departments that aren't actually, like for the elected offices, where I've gone and helped them with issues that come up. Sometimes we have citizens that come in and have feedback, we'll say, about how things are going in the county and I, I actually enjoy taking care of those citizens because there's always a way to communicate it. And so I go find out from an office what happened and, and how we can help that, that citizen. It's one of my, it's actually one of my favorite parts of my job. I know it wouldn't be for a lot of people, but I enjoy helping. And then I also really enjoyed doing leadership training. Um, that was what, what my last degree was in. And, um, I think I'm a rare guy, I, I'm assuming Mike is there too with what he studied, that I just really enjoy good government and all of the theories of it. So, um, I'm the one that gets to go, I actually enjoy reading code, writing code, researching it, things like that. Programs policy analyst, that's Karina. And one way that we've organized the work in, in the executive office that she, she kind of is over our social programs. So, you've got BRAG, uh, mental health, uh, the health department, senior center, as well as the library and then other things in the county like suicide prevention and the homeless council. And then the administrative policy analyst, um, that's of course Janine. And the first bullet, I think, really summarizes what, how we all feel about Janine and how grateful we are for her. She's, uh, helps us with everything. And I put institutional guidance, meaning she's been around so long and she knows if anyone has a question, we can go ask her. But also more formally, she's taken care of our contracts process for years. She is our official public information officer for the county. And then, um, all of us get to do special projects, things that just come up throughout the year. Um, the last slide, of course, is a sincere thank you. I've really enjoyed watching council members go out to department, and I'm sincere about this, going out to departments this year.
Is it your humble opinion?
I'm going to stick with sincere today. Although I may start saying that too much. So, I've caught myself at home and it's so fun that, yes, I'm working on that. Um, this, I love watching you guys work. Um, I, I really meant it. The first night I came, the first night I was sworn in, I made sure to come and shake hands with every one of you and say, thank you for running, thank you for being here, because you know what, it's not easy. And you guys do a lot of work and right now particularly with the budget, you're, you can be quote unquote, nobody's favorite, because you get to be the ones who say no or have sometimes harder news for department heads and people like that. So, thank you for all of your work and it's been fun watching you go out to the departments and, and ask them and get involved with them and that's been great. And we're, we are really here to help you. So, and I'm committed to continue to do that. What questions might you have or thoughts? Um, because I'm all about feedback and taking notes.
Questions, can I go? Oh, you bet. Can you answer me directly, how many times the executive has traveled and to where?
I could get it for you. I haven't memorized it, but I'm sure we could look that up.
Because we talked about, um, travel and we cut it last year, but it seems it's right back up. And I want to know what's going on and where those travels are going.
You bet. So, you'd like a report of his trips, like where he's gone? And obviously when you do that, it would be what he was doing there. You know, the purpose of the trip, that kind of thing.
Because I see the executive role as carrying out the things of what the council says and being here to manage the county rather than rah rah, super da stuff, that things that I don't see helpful. So, I want to know that. And then, I'm really hesitant about seasonal employees. I think that there are other departments that could really put, or could use help. And I, I went through the budget last night and I'm looking at HR, I'm looking at a bunch of different places and there's a lot of seasonal employees. So, I get concerned there. I don't know about the other council, but, um, as I'm sitting here looking at a deficit, I'm just, call it a Hawkeye, I'm looking at where to cut and what to cut. So, I'm really focused on that. And I'll be interested to see what the others are seeing on this as well.
Yeah. That's a fair concern and thought.
For those of us who were in the budget committee yesterday, um, I'm looking at these bonuses. I think this council has given lots of raises to the county people of recent. And it was said yesterday that the staff, there's low morale, but yet we've got to give a bonus to help the morale, but yet we've given raises which have been very, very competitive. So, those are some of my concerns.
Thank you. Other questions?
Well, I, I want to agree with Nolan on the seasonal employees. If that one person is here for just five hours a week, could that, could that not be, you know, relegated or distributed out to one of the, you know, either the policy analyst or, or the other person? And, um, I don't know, how long has, uh, is, what was his name, Talon?
Talon.
How long has he worked as a seasonal employee?
I should know that by heart, but I think it was over the summer when he started.
Okay. And so before that time, was there seasonal employees involved?
We've had seasonals in years past.
Okay.
That was part of what in our budget, last year, I believe, in our budget thoughts and going through, we took it out.
Yeah.
Uh, in our budget proposal for 2023. So, there wasn't any budget in 2023 for it.
Yeah, I'm seeing that on two, 2022, there was only $320 allocated for seasonal employees. And then '23 estimated, it jumped a lot, 15,200, and now we're jumping it again to 20,800. And so, you know, I, I'm wondering, you know, and I don't work there, but I'm just wondering why so much, you know, is all of a sudden allocated between '22 and '24 on that? And it, what the reasoning would be behind that?
Yeah.
Do any of, um, for example, Karina and Janine, do they get overtime?
We do not. So, I'm trying to think. Karina is hourly and I believe, I believe Janine is currently exempt. And so Janine works a lot.
Yeah.
Like exempt employees do. And Karina, we try to keep her hours like right at 40. We try not to have her do, we don't want to pay the overtime for that.
What's, what's a social programs leader? I don't understand what all that.
Well, I just kind of summarized it that way by saying that David has said she's, she was really interested in that kind of area. And so because of that, we've, her responsibilities are to basically be focused on things like BRAG and all of their programs. I know she was heavily involved in the, um, housing crisis task force. And, and then when it comes to Bear River Mental Health and Bear River Health Department, if there are issues that need research or support for David, she will handle those.
So, it, so what I'm hearing is that she's kind of taking up his, what he feels like his social issue should be. And she's kind of being his go-to person to go out to these departments?
Um.
Or, you know, am I, I'm just looking at that incorrectly or what is that?
No, I could, I could offer a little bit of insight there. So, for instance, when it comes to attending the board meetings and things like that, he's, he's there. He doesn't send her in his place. But it's more like, um, staff support, I would say, and policy analyst support on issues that come up with that. She is, um, both Karina and I have kind of swapped in the middle of the year, where she, Giselle actually does report to Karina and Karina's her number one, like supporter in the executive office for the senior programs, um, as well as for the library. But I was doing that before. And then on suicide prevention, I think that's more just the concert and different things that come up, ways that we could be involved to support different community programs on that. Same, I think, with the homeless council. I actually don't know a lot about the homeless council and how they run and what they do, but see, Karina would if we had questions about that. So, it's really kind of the, just the way that we've divided our work. And so I, on the other hand, um, I work with Barton Nelson in IT. I work with Stephen Nelson. I work with Dennis on our buildings and maintenance and that kind of thing. So, I'm kind of hap, handling more of the operations side and she's handling more, more of the program side, although development services is definitely a huge program.
Okay, and then another question is, we know Janine, in the past, worked many, many hours. Is she still working all those hours? And if so, why, you know, if we've got these, um, seasonal employees to take up some of that slack?
Yeah.
In addition to that, Barbara?
Yeah.
She's not helping or covering the council like she used to do?
True.
A lot of her hours have been gained and now we've thrown seasonals in there too, so.
So, she's exempt. I don't know, we don't track her hours, so I don't know. But I think it's not quite as many as she was before. I think that's fair to say.
Because I have a, I just have a structural question.
Mm-hmm.
Like, I'm on the homeless council and on the BRAG, Carl and I are both on BRAG. Uh, we're handling those things. David comes to BRAG. What is Karina's role? Like, there is no executive function for the Bear River Mental Health, the Bear River Health Department. Like, those are entities of their own that several of us are involved in and take care of. So, what, what is the executive's function and why, what exactly is the purpose? Like, I don't know, like, explain that to me, how that is structured? Because I don't see that, that that is an executive role in those things.
Yeah.
Maybe, like, I don't, you guys, I'm so new, please explain.
Yeah, you bet. So, any kind of issues that come up, if David, if, if David's interested in pursuing more research on it, he can set Karina on that path. I think the housing crisis task force is probably the best example, where there was just a lot of work to be done with that. It was an idea. Um, one of the bullets in, in.
Let's not go there, okay?
What's that?
Let's don't go to the housing crisis.
Being paid by the county.
Well.
That, that is, that's almost proven to be debunked. So, hey, let's just go, go on to something else.
So, I was just going to, thank you. I was just going to say, um, on that, I think it's the fourth page where I talk about, I, I listed the county executive powers, duties and functions, conducting planning studies for improvements on administrative, financial procedural and operational plans and programs. Anything that might help, um, the county be better, I mean, that's.
Policies where it says he is supposed to do the wishes and grants and guidance of the council. I don't see that on here, though.
Come again? What was that, Nolan?
Number one, Mr. Executives to take out and do the goals and directions of the county council. I don't see that all, at all on this list.
I would love a statutory or county code citation on those words, doing the goals and directions of the county council.
Micah can probably pull that up.
So, I didn't, I wasn't here to cover, I wasn't here to cover the council's statutory and county roles. But I know that generally speaking, that the council sets the policy and writes code and authorizes budget levels. And then the executive implements it. There have been, this would not be the first government situation in Utah where we have a strong council and a strong county executive, where they have worked together to fit, better figure out the boundaries of what, where is the boundary between setting policy and, um, writing the codes and then implementing them? I know when I was in, in, uh, in Provo, I was working for the council. I basically was the MICA for the Provo City Municipal Council. And we were trying to be pretty exact about what we wanted the mayor to do and he pushed back and his city manager did as well, saying that's not the form of government we have, that it's up to the executive to implement it. And there's quite a bit of leeway and, and authority and, um, responsibility to do that.
Hey, what did you do when you didn't feel like it was being?
You bet.
The executive wasn't doing.
Yes.
You feel the council.
Yes. And this is, this is the absolute beauty of American government, is it's up to the council and the executive to work together, to work closely together, to work out those differences, uh, to create unity and to create chemistry between them so that they can become unified as much as possible in implementing that.
Micah?
The state code, I think Nolan, you're referencing is 17 dash 53 dash 302, uh, 3A. Each county executive shall carry out programs and policies established by the county legislative body.
Yeah.
I'm sure that all departments of county government comply with programs and policies.
Yep, I had that one. Carry out the programs. Yeah. And how those are carried out is quite frankly, and, and it's, that's within the county executive's authority and purview to do. And you know what, Chair Erickson, you've got a really good point, because that's where the conflict, I, I would say where healthy conflict exists in our government, is that, um, if the executive or like down in Provo, the mayor, in that strong mayor, strong council forum, if he's not carrying it out, it's definitely, uh, the prerogative of the council to say something and to work with him, absolutely.
Well, I look, it's interesting, uh, I look at these executive office staff roles. Most of those, used to be the executives, the executive was over those things. And, and it was taken care of by the executive or the deputy together. But we didn't have all of the other infusion of the increased personnel to, I guess, I guess what we're saying is that we'd, I'd like to see more that the executive was more hands-on with these organizations.
Yeah. I, I think he is hands-on. I'm not sure how he, I'm not, I'm not maybe, or getting the exact, I'd love to hear more about the exact, specific feedback on that, how he's not hands-on. Um, he's working really hard. Also, uh, I know Karina's position was added well before, years before David got here. And so, it's, he's just using the staff that he's been given.
I think the title got manipulated or changed prior to that, because it was supposed to be assistant to Janine's, what I had understood from that. And then it turned into a policy analyst when, which I thought was interesting as the policy comes from the council. So, but you're right, but it started out as an assistant to Janine's, is my understanding from what the council had approved on that, so.
Yeah.
Just a point from what I know.
Yeah. All good feedback.
There's all these little, these special projects and these little things that, you know, the executive chooses to pursue, uh, they all cost money. They do, they all cost money. If you're going to hire a policy analyst that's going to take over these things, it costs money for that policy analyst to research and do all of these things. And I guess what I'm saying is, uh, that, that money comes from a budget and a lot of these things were not what a county council, uh, really agreed upon, that that would be the use of the monies given to him.
Okay.
So, so that's where, that's where, if we don't agree upon what he is doing, then our prerogative then would be to, okay, then we take the budget. We take the budget away from him so he can't do those things. And we don't feel like they are, there's more important issues in the county rather than those.
I would love, this is exactly, I think, where the work needs to be done between the county council and the executive, to work more closely together, like on a daily basis, to work those things out. Um, most of, from what I understand, the things that we're working on, uh, the state has given the counties the, the responsibility to do. So, not all of the things that the executive is doing would be necessarily directly from the council, but also fulfilling the duties of, um, you know, that the state has asked us to do. But together, I think that's the idea that I'm hoping for and, and what I'm trying to help us all work towards, is to be just working together on that. So, I would, I would really encourage more discussion between the branches on a daily basis, uh, more communication between the leaders. That, that is what will get us where we need to go. And that's, um, you know, like, the council, it's, it's their role to convince David to handle his duties the way that you'd like him to go. And it's his job to convince you to, you know, get funding or do other support for the things that he'd like to pursue as well. And that's, that really is the beauty of our American government. It's, it's not easy, right? But it's, it's worth it.
Um, I maybe missed this, where's David?
He is sick. He does not sound well. I talked to him yesterday after work and it was a short discussion on the phone.
Okay, well, thanks for taking all of our questions.
Oh, yeah, no, this is great.
Um, could you please, uh, on the overview page, could you tell me what all the acronyms are for the professional?
Yes. Yes. Okay, um, the first overview page, are you talking about supplies and services?
Yes.
Okay, so UAC, I think you guys know what that is, right?
Uh-huh.
Uh, the Mayor's Association, ICMA and UCMA. I put in parentheses there for the chief deputy. ICMA. ICMA is the international, um.
City Managers Association.
City Managers Association. And UCMA is Utah. And I haven't, I didn't go to any of the meetings or trainings this year for either of those. And that's something that is, I would say, standard for people that are in my position.
Can I just interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
And this is, I think, where part of the conflict comes with the county council versus the executive. Why would you be going to a mayor's association? Because in our, in our county, the executive is not a mayor and isn't to function as a mayor. And, and there's, there's, there's a big difference between a city mayor type of government and a county council executive type of government. So my question is, why would you be going to mayor's meetings? Because that's not, that, what, it was there intended for the executive to be a mayor and to function like a mayor of a city. There, it's not the same thing.
Yeah, I, I agree with you that I think that's a point of difference of opinions there. But I don't, I, I think that, so as a good delineator though, the Mayor's Association would be for the executive and I understand that's what you're saying, he shouldn't be functioning like a mayor. I'd love to maybe figure out between the two branches, what you think a mayor should act like versus a county executive and see what the differences are. But just to delineate, the ICMA, UCMA, once you become elected, you don't go to those anymore. So that's really just for the professional management folk like me.
Okay, then I, I have a question, Dirk, about that.
Yeah.
Cause I was looking into the, it's, um, on the list of the actual accounts, the City Managers Association. He's got budgeted thirty-two hundred dollars.
Yeah, that is, yeah, sorry. Did you have a specific question or can I explain it?
Just like some specific explanation about that.
That actually is a hundred percent funded by the different, um, city managers. So they have a monthly lunch. They actually pay like two hundred fifty, they each pay like around two hundred fifty dollars a year. And then.
I haven't been able to find that in the budget where that's ever come in.
Uh, we can find that for you. We bill them.
Okay.
Finish your explanation and I'll tell you what I found.
Well, that's.
Go ahead.
That, that's the understanding. And I remember last year at least, for twenty twenty-three, we actually upped it from, I think, a hundred fifty to two or two fifty. Have to talk to Betty. That each city manager, that each city pays for the year and we bill them out.
Now that's the city managers?
Yes.
Now there's also, then you have your mayors. They're getting together too?
I really honestly don't know so much about.
I think the mayors sponsor those.
The mayors.
Yeah.
I don't know so much about the mayors.
Well, I looked back.
I see it on David's, you know, calendar maybe, but I don't really, I haven't asked him about that. I don't really know what they do.
You're saying you bill out the other mayors and they pay us? There's a revenue?
Yeah, so that's why I didn't really mention it or list it here because it should be paid a hundred percent by.
Any of that, but like when I looked in Casell at the detail to that account, every month there's a, a lunch that's listed that David pays for and then, but there's always like only five or six people there. And he's buying that lunch every single month.
And they pay. So that's, that's the difference.
Where did that, where does that come in?
We can get that report. We can show you no problem.
That because that doesn't make any sense to me. Thirty-two hundred dollars that we're budgeting of our money to take everyone else's lunch.
And that's not, so just to clarify, that's not, we're not paying thirty-two hundred dollars. That's only the expenditure side. So the revenue side would be, but I can get a total report on that. Maybe.
Tell me that's zero?
What's that?
That should be zero.
Well, I, my lunch is paid for. I go to that and then.
Oh, you go also then?
Um, most, it's havesies. Most of the time it's me that goes. David might go a couple of times a year. And it's a really good meeting. Those managers work together and we work out. They ask, mm-hmm.
How many?
Well, this week's, it's Tuesday, right? Yesterday it was fourteen people attended, including me. And that's, think of a city manager and most of them were there. Yeah, and it's just a way, instead of having fourteen different bills for, that's all it is. But I'm happy to work with Betty and get an actual, here is, and I can either do all of twenty, twenty, let's see, twenty twenty-three would make sense.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Um, just up to the.
Cause I saw a bunch of the receipts and there was only like five people listed. Some of them was like Jeff Gilbert from our.
Mm-hmm.
So like, is he a city manager?
No, but he, yeah. He's, he goes and he'll present once a year on the, the COG and the CNPO dollars going through and they'll ask about it and they'll talk about it.
Yeah, I just did not understand that.
Yeah.
Cause that, like thirty-two hundred dollars for lunches, even if you're spending a hundred bucks.
So that's, yeah, so that's not.
Yeah, could you get us a, listen to how that revenue offsets that?
Absolutely. That's, I'd be happy to do that. Let me add that to my.
I, I have, is, is it okay if I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, please.
Okay, on the, um, the two fifty-one account where it says non-capitalized equipment, it went from eight hundred dollars to fifty-eight hundred dollars?
Okay, that's one thing I didn't have in my slides that I'd like to explain to the council.
Thank you.
I've been working with Mike, I wasn't gonna say his name, with one of the lease guys that gets leases for cities and counties for several months. And quite frankly, he just hasn't given me a vehicle to replace David's vehicle. We've had that seventy-two thousand and, so you'll also find in capitalized equipment on, on the, the budget report, seventy-two thousand in this year. And that was because it's been seventy-two thousand for the last couple of years to purchase a vehicle for the executive to replace the one he's got. However, then there was a bunch of discussion about leasing over the last, basically this year. And I've been working with the lease guy to try to get a vehicle. And a truck or a small SUV is, that fifty-eight hundred you see in the next year would only be if we are able to find a lease vehicle. And so I'm here to tell the council that if, in the next, and I called him yesterday because I knew I was coming today to try to have a report and he didn't get back to me today. If we end up just purchasing a vehicle straight out like the last truck was, then we will not need that fifty-eight hundred at all in non-capitalized equipment.
But you'll need the seventy-two thousand.
Well, we'll, we'll spend it in the next month or whatever, cause it's twenty twenty-three.
Truck that he currently has?
That's a good question. I, I should have thought of getting you that. It's been a few years.
Because if he can go another year, you know, with what he's got, why do we have to purchase a new, a brand new one again?
Yeah. I know the council's approved it for like the last two years, so I don't know, maybe figure out why it was okay a couple of years ago. I don't know.
I'm still lost.
So.
So if we have a lease, we pay for the lease.
We haven't.
We don't have a lease and I get a lease, I gotta pay fifty-eight hundred because I did a lease.
Right, so Nolan, my point is, the seventy-two thousand's been in there in, cause we had been planning on just purchasing the vehicle. If we end up purchasing a vehicle in the next month, that'll be a twenty twenty-three cost that we would not need to lease anything then for the next few years. We wouldn't need anything in non-capitalized. But if we're not able to find a vehicle by then, we'll just plan on leasing a vehicle. But that'll, probably won't happen until, I guess, the supply eases up or something. He's just, this lease guy's having a hard time finding a vehicle, so. So that's something I wanted to cover, so I'm glad you brought it up, but I forgot, so.
Then my last one was the professional and technical account three ten went from twenty-one thousand, I, or five thousand to twenty-one. I see you took it down to thirteen.
Yes.
What is that account?
It went from six eighteen to five thousand to twenty-one thousand.
Yeah, so the, um, county executive specifically by statute has the responsibility of auditing. Uh, this exact same kind of responsibility that the council has. It's a check on the other branches.
All that for auditing?
Well, that's the idea. Now, we don't have a plan to audit anything right now. And if we came up with a need and there was a need.
We put that at zero, then you come and tell us that you're going to do an audit and then we'll do a, a budget opening after.
All I'm saying is, if you budgeted it, you're not constricting unnecessarily another branch's.
Technical has some, too much leeway and it may be used for other things.
Right.
Right.
That's fine.
I'm saying zero. And then when you need, when you have a specific audit you wanna do, come to us for that specific amount.
Yeah, that seems.
Do a budget opening.
That seems rather unfair and not very flexible on allowing the county executive to fulfill his statutory duty.
Save a lot of money down the road.
Not necessarily. We, you're just assuming that just cause people have it in their budget, they're gonna spend it. And that's just, it's not the case. I mean, would you?
It also tells.
Without a good reason? Probably not.
Hey, we may, we don't want frivolous audits. We want some, uh, you know, we, this money would actually go to something that does, that has some meaning.
I could not support that comment more, Chair. Yeah.
That's what we.
Yep.
That's how I feel. I.
Yeah. And letting everyone know what the audits are for and the purpose and what you're actually looking for, agreed. Agreed a hundred percent. I've got a little bit of a to-do list and I'm actually happy if you think of anything that you didn't think of today as well, just email me. Happy to look it up.
Yeah, I'd really like to see the detail on that City Managers Association, what the revenue is.
Yeah. You bet.
Now, like going to the city leagues, the town, you know, city towns and leagues association meetings, all that kinda stuff, why? Why, what, I know that.
Utah League of Cities and Towns?
Yeah, he's attended those in the past.
It's UCMA is the Utah Cities County Managers Association.
Standing the reason to go to that, I.
Yeah, well, I, all of the city managers, the city management professionals, they go there because they get trained. They get to know, and we work together. It's a lot like UAC for what you're doing. As far as you go and you talk with other county council members and see what their issues are, you're able to learn from them, you're able to get trained. It's really very similar, but being a full-time management professional, it's really valuable training. And, um, and learning from your fellow professionals. And it's good. It's really good training. It's, it's something that's considered, I think, an absolute normal part of being a, a government management professional, so.
Just to clarify, Utah League of Cities and Towns, we have a membership with that or no?
That's a good question. I haven't gone to anything this year. Well, that's not true. I went to that U, Utah Rural Leadership Academy. And I'm trying to think.
But, um, Dave, you were referring to the U.
Utah League of Cities and Towns, we don't, I don't, I don't think we attend that and I don't think we have a membership with them.
Okay, so we were talking about two different things. There's just.
Yeah.
But they have a, they have a state convention that has been.
It's at the same time.
And it has been attended.
So they piggyback on each other generally, because what they'll do is the Utah League of Cities and Towns, I only went once in twenty, after I was hired in twenty twenty-two. I believe I went to the Fall Utah Cities and Counties Management Association meeting. But I only stayed for that part and then starting the next day, or it was either right before, is Utah League of Cities and Towns. They do that so that a lot of the management professionals in the cities and towns don't have to come to two different things, so.
I have, I have one other thing that I'd like you to check on. Did, I, I don't know, I just hate to be petty about it, but did the county pay for David to go to the One Utah Summit down in Cedar City? Did we pay his lodging, his gas, his expenses to go to that?
That's a good question. I'm happy to report.
Thing that I'm asking you about?
Yeah, yeah, that'll be on there.
I mean, that is, that, I was there because of the, the Rural Academy and, you know, paid, paid my own gas and stuff down.
Yeah.
Um, to be there, but, and I was there, there was a lot of really good leadership for productions. There was a lot of, um, business things. It was really, really interesting, especially as a business owner, to be there. As county leadership, I didn't see that there was any, um, specific reason to be there. And so I just, I was just curious, like, did we pay for him to go to that?
Yeah.
That would be, if you could tell me that.
Yeah, that's, that's, again, that's an interesting perspective because there's a lot of county leaders that are there and go there because it's, they're finding that it's important. And so I, I can tell you, we didn't pay his lodging. I know that because I had a commitment that I had to, I had to go for the graduation and then leave. So he took my room. So I know we didn't pay for that.
Thank you.
Cause he didn't wanna spend, you know, extra room.
A lot of civic leaders there.
Yeah.
But it wasn't specific. It was more like business-y anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a good conference.
It, it was really, really, I was really glad I was there.
Yeah, high quality. So I've got a travel report. And then I've got this, uh, city managers lunch report that we're gonna work on and get that back to you this week.
Okay.
Okay? Does that sound good? Thank you.
I'll just, I'll speak out real quick about the seasonal employees. Like, I personally would much rather hire somebody who's gonna get paid eighteen dollars an hour to be doing data. Just pulling information and putting it into spreadsheets than somebody that we're paying maybe thirty dollars an hour. We hire seasonal and it just ebbs and flows with our workflow all the time in the private sector. They're at-will employees. They come, they have one project, they come, they do it, and then we eliminate their position. They're hired knowing that their position is going to be whenever, uh, TBD. And so I feel that there is merit in having seasonal employees for that.
I, I agree there's merit, but there's times when that merit's not having and when we're deficit, that's why I'm looking there.
And are those projects Karina might be able to do? Like, does she have time? Cause I know she's really good at those research.
I would like to know what they're doing. I mean, I saw when you and I got information from David about the historic tax rate that was digging, that somebody that's getting paid fifteen to eighteen dollars, I think that's good use for that money.
Yeah. Yeah, and quite frankly, we got really lucky with both Ashley and Talon. They've just been excellent. So they were worth, they were worth the amount of money we spent.
Pay an hour?
I think it's, I don't wanna, I think it's eighteen.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
It's sixteen to eighteen.
Yeah. If they get to the point, I know, I have, just, I know that the department is very responsible for the money. If they get to the point where they don't have work for them, then they gotta go.
Yeah, or the budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Dirk, thank you for being here.
Absolutely, and I'll see you all sooner.
An hour.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on in.
Okay, there she is.
Yep.
How are you, Betty?
Hi, Tal.
Good, how are you? Don't be.
Okay. I don't know if I'm, I've never done this before. I've never even seen one, so you guys might have to kinda guide me through. You guys have our sheet from our office for the, okay. I bought one, I brought one if you guys don't have one. But I have one right here if, if you want it.
Like, do I, is it on our iPad?
When I sat down?
It would be in that, it would be in your twenty twenty-four budget. I'm, I'm looking for it now.
Oh, okay, so I just don't know what page it is.
That's the updated.
Okay.
Oh, here it is. Page thirteen.
Thirteen? Thank you. Perfect, thank you.
Got it, two nil. Okay.
Barbara, this was sitting down here on the.
Got it, yep.
Yeah, for years they had it as Gina, then they got it to me.
Okay, it's yours.
Okay, do I just kinda, if I don't mind asking, like I said, I have honestly never seen one of these, so I don't really know what you guys even expect. You just kinda go through line by line item and kind of just.
Penny by penny.
What's that? Penny by penny? Ooh, okay. All right, so obviously the, for the full-time employees, we have, um, currently we have six full-time employees. I do have an opening for a chief deputy that I haven't filled yet that I'm planning on doing. Um, and then I have two part-time employees also. And then we do have some, um, I guess that's for the first one for full-time. So I, I'm planning on filling that chief deputy position. I haven't really been in a rush to get it yet. I haven't needed it quite at this moment, but I, I do need somebody else in there with some experience that I'm hoping to be able to fill. So, um, and then on the overtime, I'm honestly not quite sure if that's just a matter of people going over their forty, that that's five hundred, if that's just there for caution maybe, I'm not sure. Yeah, and then on the part-time, like I said, I have two part-time sage and Linda. They get about thirty hours a week and they're doing great. And seasonal, we are just rolling over what we had last year for the digital mapping project that we have going. And we hired six seasonal workers for six months for that and they're. And they're actually, we have one more employee that's left with that, that they're going to be done next week because we only have a six-months time period.
Was that the one that, that everyone said he had, the professional company that was coming in?
Yeah, and that's not, yeah, and that's not what they ended up doing, we ended up just hiring interns. I don't remember how, I know we came to council for that.
And he said it would be done within one year.
Oh, no, there's no way we'll have it done within one year.
I remember, we put a hundred thousand dollars to that.
Yeah, and I, and I just know that this is the left, I think it was a total of three hundred thousand that was given, and then I know there was a hundred left and they rolled it over into this year, and I need it. I mean, we only got twelve hundred maps done, and we have like thirty-four hundred maps. So we still have, that project's going to take a long time.
Didn't we do some ARPA money on this?
Not on the digital maps, we had ARPA on our image, yeah, and on our images for the documents in the back. But that's what that's for, I mean, I don't think we'll end up using the full hundred thousand because we only have six months of interns for that. I thought I might have written down here what I use this year. I can find that out for sure to let you know. We didn't get the full six months out of our interns, when school started, we kind of lost them and they kind of trickled as their schedules got busy, some could come more than others. So we didn't get full-time out of them, we did in the summer months, but once schools start, we did not. So, but we do have about twelve hundred of those maps that are complete from their help. And then, do you have any questions on that one before I move on? And then on subscriptions, I don't know the employee benefits, I'm assuming, I don't know much about that. I was explaining that it's just the benefits go to employees.
It's kind of high to me, doesn't it, like, it's half of the salary?
Which part, sorry?
Yeah, is that about right?
It's about the same on the rest of them.
Okay, good.
For the benefits, okay. And then for the subscriptions, obviously, we have three hundred in there. Last year, we only used about fifty bucks of that for Sam's Club for paper. That's usually where I get our paper from. We don't use a whole lot of paper anymore, so I didn't need to use much for that, so I wouldn't think we would probably even use that three hundred. But UAC sometimes does have some subscriptions that we pay for throughout the year that come through that we don't necessarily know, but they're not very high. And then the travel for conferences is for UAC and for, there's seventy-five hundred there, that was allotted for three people to go, we've never had three people go, we've just had two. We used less this year because I was the only one that went to most of them, so we only ended up using a total of about, I think I wrote that down, almost two thousand for the year is all, but that was just with one person going. So if I hire a chief deputy, I'll be taking them with me if we do that next year. And then.
And what was the cost, is it seventy-five hundred for two people?
That was for three, that was allotted for three people, so I, I don't have any intention of taking three.
Okay.
I would only take two if I fill this position for the chief deputy, to have them come.
So that could be lowered even more?
Yeah, I, I don't, yeah, we will not be using that full seventy-five hundred for sure.
Okay.
And then the education and training, which is UAC registration fees, which that's just for paying for the conferences to go. So we have the two UAC, and then we have the summer conference that we attend, so that's for those three conferences. And then.
I do have a question.
Yeah, for sure.
Why such a big drop on professional and technical? And I'm glad there's a drop, but that's really a big drop.
Yeah, because our ARPA funds were wrapped into that.
Oh.
That money was in there, and so those projects are complete and we don't have.
Thank you.
Uh huh. And then on the software for AutoCAD, that first one, that fourteen-five hundred, that is just for our AutoCAD for the full-time employees, it's.
What is it, call?
AutoCAD, that's our actual software program that we draw the maps in, so that, that is really close. The total, the renewal fee was fourteen thousand two oh four, so it's really close to that. And that should stay pretty consistent every year with that same amount. I've already renewed for twenty twenty-four because we have to renew before the end of the year, so that's already been taken place. And then the software packages for the seasonal is that same amount, which obviously this year, we only used seventy-four hundred of that for the seasonal, for the six months. So again, you know, if we can get employees the seasonal longer next year, that could go up, but I would not say that it would be fourteen for that. But it's hard to say because it just depends on how many seasonal I can get and how long they stay, so. And then the professional technical, like I said, we just talked about, that's lower because we had that wrapped into ARPA last year. So that amount would, could be used if we needed any, to hire somebody for any project that might come up, I believe is why that was, just put it at two thousand, I think it's been pretty standard that for the last few years. And then office expenses, the twenty-five hundred, we usually use that for the most part just for our regular expenses for the office. Some years we've, it feels like most years we're pretty close to that number, we don't go over, but we go to that. And then obviously, the phones is for the internet and desktop. And then miscellaneous services, that twelve thousand there, four thousand of that is going to be for co-file for next year. That was part of the ARPA project that we did, there was thirty-nine maps that got sent with that preservation project that did not get accounted in the bid, and so they, that four thousand is to pay for those remaining maps that they have that they're doing, that they've already, they already have those maps with them, so that's where that is.
And then the rest of it then?
The rest of it, I don't have any specific use for it unless, I guess, it's just for, if something comes up or if we can use it to preserve some more books throughout the year would be great. At the end of the year, if I have some of that money, I could take more of those maps in the back and get them preserved and slowly eat away, I get a.
How does it change so much between twenty twenty-three?
Yeah.
That had ARPA in it too.
Okay.
So that, that, that item and the professional technical had both ARPA in them for co-file and US Images. So that's why those are so much lower. And then the equipment and supplies, that six thousand, I don't think will be that high again this year. The reason, well, last, let's see, last year we did, or this year, twenty twenty-three, we did use most of that, but that was because we paid off a copy machine and got that paid off rather than leasing it, so that's ours, so we won't have that. And then we did do, he had electrical work done in that room where the interns are to get all those computers set up. So if we just took the maintenance for just our, our equipment in there, we spent about thirteen hundred this year on office equipment and maintenance. So I would not think that we would even close to going that high.
If I'm reading this correctly, in twenty twenty-two, you were three hundred thousand dollars in surplus of what your expenses were, right?
Yeah, yeah, we definitely, I mean, we bring in, I mean, we always have, you know, we should be paying for what we're using with our fees that get collected for sure. This year, obviously, it's down from last year, so it might not be as high because the market is down a little bit, but, you know, in a couple of years or so, that could go back up high again, so depending on the market, but we're still covering our own fees. Mhm, yeah.
Well, that's good, we need more departments like that.
Don't know if I, if there's, is there more on there, but.
Other questions?
No, I think you're doing a great job.
Somebody who's never done this before, you did very well.
Yeah.
And it sounds like several of these. It up here.
Yeah, several of these categories may be lower, and I don't know what the thought process is. Do you want to lower them now and have them ask for money later, or just leave it the way it is and look at the excess at the end, or what, what's the normal procedure?
Well, I, I think that you budget majorly and then do our best to stay within that budget, and then if, you know, if, if some things do come up, you know, we, then we work with it.
Work with it, yeah, I mean, I don't foresee anything at this moment, you know, of anything coming up that would make me need to do that unless something big came about, but.
So on that equipment supplies and maintenance, how much could you lower that if you don't think you're going to lose?
I mean, like I said, as far as I am under the understanding, the only thing that goes towards is just our, you know, our copiers and all that, which we have a few in there, we have some bigger copy machines. So, I mean, this year, we did spend thirteen hundred, so, I mean, I, I don't want to make it so I'm so close just in case something happens, but I mean, I don't know, even two, I don't. A half of it maybe, and just, and then, like you said, if there isn't a problem for me, if I, for whatever reason, I had to replace something that I could come, you know, and ask for more, that, I mean, I guess that would work for me, if that works for you guys.
Yeah. Yeah, and that twelve thousand dollars for miscellaneous services, you say you know you're going to spend four thousand, but you don't have any other.
I mean, I, I mean, the only thing that I could think of was to be able to keep it for, I mean, we do still have a lot of stuff that needs to be preserved in the back. There are still a lot of old stuff back there that we haven't got to that I would love to be able to piece by piece, you know, start getting some of those, so all of it is done, so, I mean, I, I definitely would like to have it if I could so that I could send some more of those off and get them taken care of.
I would agree that that's.
I do too, I think that's.
A pretty important function that we need to do.
Okay.
So I have a question about the general operation in the building. You buy your own paper independent, there's not like one contract, all county paper is purchased by.
We just purchase it, mhm, we just.
Department just goes and goes to Sam's Club and buys a room.
And I've gotten it from other companies like Denny's and stuff, but it's a lot more, so I've just been going to Sam's Club and getting it because it seems to be cheaper.
Yeah, yeah, I just think for efficiency sake, we should as a county have one.
We've discussed that before.
There's actually, well, there are, there are state contracts for supplies like that. School districts use it all the time, and it is a state contract and they just order it through and it's brought in to most government organizations and everything. And then there's, and it actually does beat, you know, a lot of the local retailers by quite a bit.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I was, I mean, I just, Denny's was really pricey for a lot of stuff, and so I kind of stopped using them and started going to like Amazon and Sam's because I was, it was quite a bit cheaper.
Okay, and I'm not questioning what you're doing.
Oh, no, no, for sure, no, I wasn't taking it like that.
It feels like it's an inefficient practice, or a whole building, like, and you each have your own copy machines in each department? I mean, maybe.
We, I mean, we use ours quite a bit still, I mean, we're making copies a lot, so we, we use ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we do use ours quite a bit, I mean, not as much as we did before we were digital, but we still use a lot of paper.
It does, all different sizes too.
Yeah, we have multiple.
Yeah, big glass and everything that you need, I know that, so.